Call to order this February seventeenth, two thousand and sixteen, meeting of the Franklin County Commission. Roll call.
Mr. Waymire?
Present.
Vice Chair Renaud?
Present.
Chair Howard?
Present.
Commissioner Harris?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
If you have an electronic device, if you would put it on silent and stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, then please remain standing for the implication that will be led by Pastor Scott Dickinson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning Commissioners and staff. Beautiful day in Franklin County, and we can enjoy it. Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for our community, for our county, for our cities, and, Lord, we thank you for the folks that lead us forward. And, Lord, I pray today for our Commissioners and the county staff as they put their noses to the grind and make this a really great place to live. Watch over our citizens, be with those who are hurting now through death and illnesses and things. We just lift them up to you. Just help us to make wise decisions in our lives as we make wise decisions for the county and for the people of the county. Lord bless us, watch over us, give us a great week the rest of this week, and help us to enjoy this beautiful day. We ask in your name. Amen.
Thanks, Coach.
That takes us to Correspondence and Organizational Business, John.
The only thing that I have is that we have the Joint City-County School Board Luncheon this afternoon, and it is here, and that'll be at noon.
I thought it was at City.
City Hall Chambers.
Excuse me. You're right. This is City Hall Commission.
Any public comment? Takes us to the Consent Agenda. Items on the Consent Agenda today are the minutes from the February tenth, two thousand and sixteen Commission Meeting, and claim vouchers in the amount of six hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. They have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Have a motion as their second?
Second.
Have a motion as their second?
Mr. Waymire?
Yes.
Mr. Renaud?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Takes us to items of business. The first item of business is consideration of replacing porcelain stools with stainless steel stools made for the correction facility. Paul, you want to talk to us about that?
Morning, Commissioner. I'll just give you a quick update, real quick, on the figure that I gave you. We're actually at eleven stools, and the cost would be twenty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-three dollars for total replacement of all the porcelain stools with the correctional facility ones.
Wait, three thousand, how much?
Five hundred and seventy-three.
Which means you must have already replaced two of them.
Three.
Three?
Yep. They're on order, actually. The two are on order. What we have is they're being broken, obviously, and then they're turned into a weapon or something like that, a threat to somebody else. And they're very individualized to the institutional correctional facilities companies because they are not a one-unit stool where mostly, in like the adult side, you have a sink and a stool. They're together in one unit. They mount down, and they're all one-piece. These are individualized stools. They are a wall mount instead of a floor mount. The size and diameter of the mounts are bigger than normal. So they're very limited to those that make them and produce them. When they make them, they make one and have it in stock, so when you go to order them, you're a four-to-six-week wait out for a stool to get made and get shipped to you. So we have currently waiting on two that are being replaced to get shipped to us, and that is where we stand with the eleven that need to be done.
I remember when we built the facility, they made a point of saying that they were porcelain fixtures instead of stainless because it would be a less institutional look, and apparently that wasn't the right look for us.
And all these will be going in the juvenile facility?
Mm-hmm.
Ethel, do you have anything to put? You want to put it this or anything?
Well, I just would like to add to what Paul said. The kids that we have had in recently are more violent, and they are repeat offenders, so they know that those can be broken. So that's the first thing. And they can cut themselves with the broken pieces. They can cut my staff. They can cut other kids.
Break windows.
Well, that has nothing to do with the toilets. So I would just have it... Yeah, that KDHG thought that less institutionalized items would be good. They are easier to keep clean, things like that, but they are way too secure.
Are these in individual rooms, or are they in public areas where individual kids use same one?
Each cell.
So they're in individual cells?
And that's a requirement that they... Each cell has one.
Well, my thought is that if we replace some of them, putting those type of students or individuals in those compartments that had the stainless steel rather than in the porcelain ones is... I mean, maybe it's something that... I guess I'm trying to figure out how to delay doing all of them at one time, possibly, is what I was thinking of. Is there a potential? But I don't know. Maybe it's cheaper to do them all at once.
Well, you have the fact that they can make them all at one time, and you're not on a four-to-six-week wait if you just order. I mean, if you wanted to, we could do a half and do half. I recommend we do all of them because of the fact that you have a four-to-six-week wait. You're limited on who makes them. Right now, they're coming out of Acorn Island, California, and that's about one of, I think, one of two places that make them.
The tough thing with Ethel about it is that this has kind of turned into a little bit of a game. Is that they understand that they can break them, and so we don't necessarily have a way to tell who will and who will not break them when we put them in a cell. And so, honestly, and like I said, it's turned into a game just for amusement. And so at this point, I'd kind of like to just get them all done and be done with that.
One problem I see is this can be used as a weapon, and now we're aware of this. And if we don't deal with it and something happens down the road, what could our liability be knowing that we knew about the problem and didn't correct it? I think we could be putting ourselves on the spot and correct it.
And that, to me, that is important. That's secondary, but then we could have the injury to another person that's in our charge or one of our own staff.
Are there any consequences to these individuals doing this? Do they get more time, or do they...
Well, we can't... We can't control that. We basically report. We'd always have a deputy come over and do a report as far as charges or reimbursement, things like that. That's up to the board. We have one. The last one is... Does that where he's at? He doesn't have access. Been getting money out of him, obviously. So if, you know, we're kind of limited on what we can do as far as consequences.
John, what will this be paid out of?
I go back and forth on this. I can see it on the equipment fund, but I can also see it on the interest of the capital.
So there's...
I guess the one other option is just that we do have dollars available that are unencumbered that are just for, since we do pay the bond from annex, the annex dollars, we could use some of the funding that's in there for this, if the board wanted to. Because there are capital dollars over there. So it's just however we like to do that.
I would leave that up to you, in my opinion. You know more about which funds are in the best shape, which ones it would affect the least, so forth. In my opinion, someone else may have a different one, but... Do you have any more questions for Paul or Ethel on this?
We have an inmate fund. I'm sure it wouldn't be much of anything if we did, from, like at the jail, from commissary proceeds and all that? You don't? Okay. I figure if you did, it would be any amount, but...
Looks like we need to make it look like an institution, a home environment. I make a motion that we go ahead and get all of them one time, coming this way.
Okay, we have a motion to replace the porcelain stools with stainless stools. Was there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion as their second, Jim.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Waymire?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Thank you, Paul.
That total, just for the record, is also for installation also, not just the cost of the stools. That is installation, which will help mark due. Thank you.
Next item of business will be Consider Approving Solicitation of Chemical Bids for 2016.
Morning Commissioners. Annually, the weed departments list bids for herbicides to control noxious weeds in the county. They're sold to landowners. They're used on public right-of-ways, including the state, and also on county property like the yard. The request is a motion approving solicitation of bids for chemicals.
It is pretty cut and dried on this. Do you want to have a question? This? If not, look for a motion to approve solicitation of chemical bids for 2016. So move. Have a motion as their second?
Second.
Motion as their second?
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Jim's going to stay up there and talk to us about the solicitation of bids for Bridge Number Ten Zero Dash Oh Eight Point One on Jackson Road East of Indiana Road.
As you recall, Franklin County was awarded an off-system bridge project to replace Bridge Ten Dash Eight Point One. The plans are complete. The right-of-way's been acquired, water line's been relocated, and the phone line's underway to be moved to facilitate the construction. The next task is to solicit bids for the replacement of said bridge. The request is a motion approving solicitation of bids to replace the bridge.
Okay, I think we've had quite a bit of conversation on this bridge already, and I think we've had a study session, if I remember right. Any questions? Now I would look for a motion to approve the solicitation of bids for the bridge on Jackson Road East of Indiana Road. So move. Have a motion as their second?
Second.
Motion as their second, Jim.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Jim's going to stay with us for item number four. This is going to be Consider Awarding the Bid for Three Steel Bottom Dump Trailers to Armor-Lite Trailers in the Amount of Ninety-four Thousand, Two Hundred Dollars. Jim?
On August twenty-fourth, discussion occurred about bidding three belly dump trailers. The request was to bid an individual and then bid three of them. It turns out that you just multiply the individual bid by three, and you get the total for three. Drivers from the department visited two counties and one manufacturer up in Marysville. The specifications were produced, and bids were solicited from three manufacturers. Three bids were opened, and the president and the clerk, and the bid of Armor-Lite trailers was the lowest responsible bid. The request is a motion awarding the bid for three steel bottom dump trailers to Armor-Lite in the amount of ninety-four thousand, two hundred dollars.
I talked to one of the drivers that went and looked at the trailers, and he was telling me a little bit about what they found and said that these were quite a bit cheaper than the others, and he didn't see any real difference in the construction of these trailers compared to the others. Now, one of these trailers that these are replaced is going to be kept, right?
Yes.
And one was wrecked, and it's going to be...
It's already been... It's already been acquired by our insurance carrier.
The third trailer, is it going to be sold?
We would anticipate having it declared surplus and putting it on Purple Wave, which, if the insurance company's correct, it'll bring somewhere around twelve thousand dollars.
Anyone have any questions?
Holding capacity, I assume, is similar.
Yes.
I think it's great you sent staff to check them out, and since they're the end user.
Just tell me something about these are twenty-seven-foot trailers instead of the longer trailers, which...
Twenty-seven foot ten from the kingpin to the center line of the back axle. The specs were drawn from twenty-seven-ten to thirty-two-six.
What's the tonnage capacity?
Somewhere between twenty-one and twenty-five, depending on whether you put the boards on top or not.
Any more questions? If not, we'll consider awarding the bid for the three steel bottom dump trailers to Armor-Lite trailers. Have a motion? So move. The motions are second?
Second, yes.
Motion as their second, Jim.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
With that, go to staff reports. John?
Just two things. Number one, the Community Correction Director application, open period, open application period has ended, and so Gaila and myself are starting to wade through those, look through all the applications. With that, we are working with an advisory board, Community Corrections Advisory Board, that is in place through the Fourth Judicial District, and they will be assisting us with those interviews. And then, so we're starting on that process. It will probably be a lengthy process. I was encouraged, I think we got about, I think it's fifteen applications. So that was encouraging, and we have a pretty good, a pretty good amount of applicant pool come in. And I've started taking a look at those, and there are some quality applicants in there. So that was, that was also encouraging because this is a pretty specialized thing. The second thing is, is that just it came up that April seventh, it doesn't look like is going to work because there's already a clerks' meeting that day for the southeast Kansas officials meeting. So we're looking real quickly at what will work better, and we'll let you know within the week of when that'll be so that you can get that on your calendars so we can make that change. So luckily, we hadn't sent out the invitations yet, so we're still in pretty good shape. So it's still a month, month and a half out. That's all I have.
Eric? Jim, you... Okay, with that, go to Commissioner Comments, Board Reports.
I went to the hospital meeting last night. I think as far as action items were overly interesting or other than just business as usual. Lisa's first, well, Lisa started there a few weeks ago, but it was her first board meeting, and the board received several just informational reports, things that they, I guess, might work on later in the year about information technology, what the charitable association's done so far, and kind of, I guess, a training but on coma and other legal considerations for board members.
Roy?
I went to the hospital ribbon-cutting for their cancer clinic yesterday morning. Ransom Memorial is collaborating or partnering with Lawrence Memorial Hospital in treating cancer, not only here but using the facilities here, but also having available the facilities at Lawrence Memorial Hospital to augment what they can offer here in town. So it's another example of a community hospital responding to the needs of the community and moving forward with their evolution, and goes right along with their new parking facility and the new emergency room expansion. So they're really addressing the needs of our community and being a big partner with our community to provide healthcare needs. And I went to the Legislative Coffee on Saturday. Spent quite a bit of time on school finance, what the legislature may or may not do about that, kind of the block grant scenario for this year. Might be replaced by something else, and Representative Finch thought they had time to do something about it, and Representative Jones thought they didn't have time to do it, and so they'll come up with something with school finance. That's going to be a big issue. Talked a little bit about healthcare and expanding Medicare and expanding Medicaid. Don't know where they're heading on that. I can't remember. Remember anything else, John, on Legislative Coffee?
Like you said, the biggest thing that took up the most amount of time is talking about the, because the Supreme Board overturned the block grant form of funding. And so trying to figure out what they're going to do, how the legislature's going to move forward with getting that taken over. It took up quite a bit of...
If you're interested in hearing more about it, Representative Finch had done a lot of research on it. It sounded like he was very knowledgeable on it. I know he's always really willing to talk to each and every one of us about our concerns, so if you're interested in hearing more about it, I'm sure he would be willing to discuss it with you.
Mr. Harris?
Attended the ECAN multi-county board meeting last evening. It was a long meeting, fourteen items on the agenda, and I'll cover every one of them with you. No, actually. We were discussing the community service block grant application process. Of course, anytime you're asking state or federal entities for money, there's certain things you have to do. One of them, and the biggest focus, was the development of a strategic plan, which has goals and outputs in there, and we probably spent of the two hours, half the time, more than half the time, talking about strategic plan. And I just, you know, anybody that's on boards that you've got input where they're putting a strategic plan together, I would recommend when you do a strategic plan, you have what the goals are, but you need to have some form of measurement of what the outcomes are going to be, not just that we will try to do this. I mean, we're going, there needs to be something measurable. So they're going, we're going back to the, our staff is going kind of back to the drawing board a little bit to put some data into the strategic plan so that we actually have measurable data for the outcome of the goals that have been established. And that's the only board meeting I've been to, although I think Commissioner Howard, Dunn, and myself were each given a note here, requests for us to attend Fire District Board Meeting. And I just, I want to get, make sure I'm clear on this, is that the, a fire is formed by the authority of the county, yes? They are then given the power to levy taxes for the function of that fire board. That being said, though, even though we have the authority and we form them, they then have the power to levy, we don't have any authority truly over them after that. And from my past reading of the statutes, a long, long time ago, I, that's where I think we fall. We've talked about it before, maybe individually, but not collectively, and I know it can be somewhat of a hot-button thing, but it works effectively in other counties, in other states, and in other counties within our own state of having a county-wide fire service where all the fire districts are under the leadership and oversight of a department head, which then is oversight by county commissioners. I'm just wondering if that's something that has ever been looked at before. I know we've, I've talked about it to other commissioners, whether it's something that we should look at and make a determination, because I know there could be an economy of efficiency in the leadership, having, instead of everybody operating autonomously, having direct leadership and oversight from a county department head and utilization of funds and all that stuff. So I opened up the box, and there it is.
The one statement that I would say on that, Commissioner Harris, is that if we were, if the commission was to do something like that and to take the lead on something like that, I think that the best path forward on looking at that would be to do a feasibility study is to set aside funding through the budget process to see about putting money aside that we're going to see about hiring a company to do feasibility studies. I know for certain, because I was involved in one over in Missouri, that there are a couple of groups located fairly close by Missouri area that can provide these services. And that's one thing that they do look at is they look at some consolidation and stuff like that, and it's, again, to achieve better cost savings and then also greater efficiency for the entire, for the entire community affected area. So if the commission wanted to do something like that, that's, that would be the recommendation.
And I know, and it would, you're exactly right. It would have to be a process. I just know this, is that there are other counties, and just to our south, Anderson County had gone through this and do this, and from my understanding, and some of my fellow commissioners may even have input into it, that they are run well, and there is efficiency. They all get the same direction. I mean, that's where I vision it going to, but you'd have to go through a process to get there. Because the bottom line, it is the money, but it's not just the money. It's having the coordination, the training, and it's all consolidated where that everybody's getting the same information and the same training. So I would think it would raise not only the level of efficiency, but the level of potential safety for the very citizens that were tasked with protecting. Just my thoughts.
We looked at this before, past, and kind of a unique situation where volunteer rural fire departments are almost territorial and are real loyal to their fire chiefs and that sort of thing. And the question was, if we went to countywide control, is how many of the volunteers would you lose because they're loyal to their fire chiefs and their district?
And I understand that.
I've had multiple, multiple departments inquire about this.
And see, and loyalty is a very special and great thing, but I, you can't take loyalty over the benefit of safety.
Two or three years ago, this was kind of kicked around, and the answer then was we need to wait till a fire assessment, whatever it is, was the, urgency management can tell us exactly what it was, but it wasn't operational like a consolidation study. It was more assets, capabilities, like, you know, there's this much equipment, this many... there's this much equipment, this many volunteers capable of doing this much, more like a rating, insurance rating would be, but, uh, uh, at the time, that was the answer, we needed to wait for, for that study to be done before we could move anything.
And that, and I understand that, and you know, we need to wait for the times right or the things are in place, but I, I don't think you wait forever and just let things pass along. I think that we have a, an obligation as leaders to look at the best expenditure of, of funds, and above all, providing the best level of safety available to, to our citizens. I, I've been told, I don't know this for a fact, maybe some of the other commissioners can chime in, is that there are, and I, maybe even Allen, is that there's, uh, from a fund standpoint, being towards equipment, there's, there's duplication of equipment that if it was, if it was county fire, that there wouldn't need to be a, as much necessarily equipment, because each little fire area needs to have, feels like they need to have X number and pieces of, of type of equipment, whereas if it was coordinated by one entity, then, uh, there wouldn't need the, the necessity to have as many pieces of equip- I don't know if that's right or not, I just think that's what I remember hearing. Anyway, I, it's just something that has been on my, uh, mind almost the entire time I've been on the commission, then I got this note this morning about warning us to, uh, attend a, uh, fire district meeting, which is what sparked me to start this conversation.
I talked with one of the firefighters from Coffee County, uh, yesterday, matter of fact, about this a little bit. The way Coffee County operates, they also are county-wide fire, they have a director that's located in Burlington, and an assistant director, then each one of the fire departments, I believe there's eight of them in Coffee County, have their own fire chief. He's over all the departments. Um, they rotate a new piece of equipment, every year a different station gets a new piece of equipment, so they keep rotating it. He said they couldn't operate without it, they wouldn't have, be able to keep going. Um, I know each volunteer gets paid twenty dollars for every call out, they have, uh, life insurance policies, they have a retirement, when some of them leave, there's a retirement form. He was definitely, thought it was great, and said that they wouldn't be able to operate over there if they didn't do this. So I know Coffee County's also for this. I'm wondering, would it do anything good to put this on a study session and maybe have, uh, Allen and open up, if some of the fire chiefs in the world would like to come to the study session and get the ball rolling on this? Because I think it's, I think right now, my opinion is, those people are, are a lot of people on board to do this, it's just gonna be a handful of people that's gonna oppose it. But I don't know if the study session is the answer, to start talking about this or-
Well, Rick, uh, Commissioner Howard, that's right where I was going with this, is that, uh, if it's something that's of note, I feel like that there's some interest from the, the bench here, and that if it is, that we, it would be beneficial for us to put it on a study session, to at least look at it and, and get input to decide, hey, yes, did we go forward, or no? You know, it's, it's a moot issue, moot point.
We probably, I think involvement from the fire departments, even if we do think there's, you know, a need from them, needs to be, they need to be at the table from day one, so this might even be, I guess John could, you know, communicate with them, but even if this might be an instance where we need to do like an evening, uh, being that most of them are volunteers, an evening meeting, or, or change the time to-
At least have the cheese from each department here.
Make every, make every effort to-
That's kind of what I was thinking, is a, a special session where we're sitting down and talking through the issues, and not quite as formal, but have a, a, a greater discussion about, about it, yeah, I agree.
Maybe the objective of the first meeting would just be to lay out a timeline, or a, not a timeline for, but like, uh, what we need to do, you know, the who, what, when, and where, is that we want to identify before we take any-
Just get a good idea who's on board and who's not.
Yeah.
So.
And as you already said, with any idea, even good ideas, you're gonna have those that are on one side, you're gonna have those people that are opposed for whatever individual eager, potential, who knows, uh, reasons, but, uh, again, I just think it's something that's worthy of us looking into, to make a determination on whether to go forward with it, because, uh, what we have at stake here is the safety of our citizens that we're, have an obligation to provide the, the highest level of safety to.
Good.
Now, that's all I got.
Okay, last Thursday, I attended a executive board, FCDC had a meeting that was called in the process of looking for a new director to move that forward, brief discussion on that, how they wanted to proceed with, with the, the search, and then also, on Thursday, Commissioner Renaud, administrator and myself, met with the CBB, uh, three of their board members, and just had, visited with them about, uh, they had some concerns of what, uh, how this was gonna go forward with their, uh, search for a director there too. And that's all I've attended since the last meeting. One thing, before I forget this, I will be leaving early in the morning, I'm going out of state. I know you have a seven-thirty to nine o'clock FCDC, uh, meeting. Are we gonna put COFO on-
I am, I'm making arrangements for that to be covered.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have. Anybody have anything else? If not, but-
I've got one concern, Rick, uh, while we're talking about concerns, uh, I have one concern with, uh, the railroad crossings in the county, um, some of them are very rough, specifically, uh, Midland Railroad Crossing on Sand Creek Road, it's like, uh, hitting a curb each way, you go across the railroad tracks. Uh, I don't know if we have some sort of mechanism to try to help our railroads to, uh, do a little maintenance on their road crossings and try to make them a little more convenient to the citizens that travel across these railroad crossings, uh, I don't know what kind of mechanism, if we have any kind of impetus to this, ask them, could you work on your railroad crossings?
It's been my experience that working with the railroad, um, they have the right to be there going all the way back to the eighteen hundreds, and to get them to do much of anything is, is, is challenging. It, we can make requests, but that's about all we can do.
Working, working with the railroad is kind of like, uh, the bureaucracy of the federal government times ten.
And so, I can bring that up to them, the, the concerns, Jim and I can go out and take a look at it and, and see what we're, where we're at on that, but I would, we would certainly, uh, approach them and ask, and if there's anything that they can do.
The, the crossing there on Sand Creek Road, of course, gets a lot of truck traffic from the quarry, it's like going into a trench and coming back out, and you have to really slow down unless you wanna knock your undercarries or your car off, it's just like hitting a curb.
On that crossing too, I've also had a call, um, it was about, basically, uh, the train coming out of the trees, you can't see it at all, and there's no crossarms, and there's no flashing lights there, and the only light points straight forward, and, uh, there's actually two people, but basically said, you don't know there's a train there until it pulls out, I mean, there's no, no side lights or anything, or anything to warn you at night, so. And if you were, if you were there voicing concerns, that would be one more to add.
Absolutely. Good? Anything else? If not, would look for a motion to adjourn. So move. Motion, is there a second? Motion and a second, all in favor? All opposed or adjourned?